All right, it's 7:00 PM. I'll call the January 21st, no, January 27th, 2021 Planning Board, Nottingham Planning Board Meeting to order. I think we have everybody here as a few numbers that I don't recognize. I know Joanna's working feverishly to rename those for me. First point of order is, so due to the state of emergency declared by the governor and as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-08, boards thereof are authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. The Nottingham Planning Board is utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. Mr. Groh Nice could not attend tonight, so I will be running the meeting. So I'd like to start off by, through a roll call, to confirm who's here. So as I call your name, please just say aye. Ian McKinnon?
Here, just in time.
You try again, Ian?
Can you guys hear me now?
Gary Anderson?
Yes, here.
There you go. Sorry, guys, I was having a problem with my speakers. Susan Mooney?
Yes, I'm here.
Robert Davies?
I'm here.
Leanne Gast?
Here.
Tyler Eaton?
Here.
And we have Stephanie Cassella from our Sheriff Regional Planning Commission, and Erin Darcek is our secretary. So did I miss anybody? No. So I would like to have Ms. Gast will be voted in seating for Mr. Groh Nice tonight, and Mr. Davies will be voted in seating for the empty planning board seat vacated by Mr. Clough. Everybody? So the first item on the agenda for tonight is a continuation of case 20-009-SUB. It's an application from Maryland and Jeffrey Cole requesting to subdivide 31.18 acres into six lots, two commercial lots on Route 4, one residential lot on Smoke Street, and three residential lots on Kennard Road. Their property has frontage on Route 4, Smoke Street, and Kennard Road in Nottingham, and is identified as tax map six, Lot 16. And just a point of clarification on this is, it's been brought to our attention that Kennard Road is a scenic road. So that'll have some impact on, on the case for tonight, as well as that final action can't occur tonight on this, on this case, because we'll have to notice it as such for a future meeting. But there's, will be some additional items on here that would have to probably have a continued meeting anyhow. So with that, we'll give you a quick summary on, on the case. We originally, the planning board originally accepted the application as complete on December 2020. Application was continued to tonight, which allowed the applicant to seek zoning variance. The variance was granted for, to allow residential in the commercial industrial zone of Route 4. Let's see, we've since received some revised plans that have been received and reviewed by the staff, by staff here. I can let Steph provide an update, updated summary of that, and then we'll have, have the applicant kind of give a summation of it as well, before we go into more of the public hearing and board, board hearing.
So Ed, did you want me to go through the entire review, or just the updates?
I think just the, the updates.
Okay. So the applicant and I had been in communication, and in his resubmital, he addressed all of the, the questions and issues that I had, and that is included in the, one of the resubmital packets that's posted for tonight's meeting. A couple of updates, I didn't have a waiver request that was on there, so there is a waiver request for driveways up to 10%. Let's see, the project name was also wrong on my review, so it's been changed to the coal subdivision on Route 4. Some other technical comments, um, let's see, the proposed lot doesn't, as last submitted, doesn't have the minimum 50 feet of, I'm sorry, minimum 50-foot width of buildable area for Lot 16. That's something that I think the applicant will address tonight, and that's for the contiguous 30,000 square foot area. There were also some comments on the shared driveway and where it was located, and how it, it crosses some steeper slopes. We had a question about fire prevention and fire protection, whether sprinklers or cisterns were proposed for the, for the subdivision, as well as just a technicality on the wetland scientist stamp on all pages that were to be recorded. I think that's a high-level overview of things that were noted, and I know things have changed since then, so I will let Scott take care of any other updates and what him and this client are thinking.
Sure, thank you. And Scott, I know, Mr. Frankwitz, and so you're on. I know the last time you were here, you know, we didn't go into a tremendous amount of detail pending the, you know, your, you know, what, what zoning decided. So I'll let you kind of guide us through from this point.
Yeah, if I could share my screen. Can everybody see that?
There we go.
So good evening, Scott Frankwitz from New Hampshire Land Consultants. As Stephanie said, we received a review on Monday. We've been looking at the plan since then, trying to work a few things around. One of the big changes from the initial plan that we submitted in December is that there's only one commercial lot now proposed on Route 4. We eliminated the second one and made the buildable area up on the upper side of it. Sticking with that lot, one of the comments Steph had was this 30,000 square foot area on this lot, there was an area in here we had designated 25% plus slopes, and we reevaluated it, and it's just slightly below 25%, and that connects now. And it has more than 30,000 square feet of buildable area, as well as over here, which we're not using right now, has about 35,000 square feet. The reason for eliminating the lot is this would require a wetland permit and another variance, and the client wasn't, wasn't in favor of doing that. So we consolidated the two lots into one. And then going around, there were no comments on, on the lot on Smoke Street, and then the biggest comments and what I'd like to talk mostly about tonight are these two middle lots, and then this last lot, there was no comments as well, it's conforming. So on this, these two middle lots, originally we had proposed these driveways split, one going up to 16-4 and one going up to 16-3. And there was issues or concerns raised at the last meeting about impacting these 25% slopes with the driveway. So we relooked at that, and we, what we attempted to do was to make it a common driveway and come in through here. The issue that Steph raised and I missed in our redesign is that lot line has to follow that, that common driveway. And after review of that, there's no way we can make this common driveway work and, and continue to have 30,000 square feet of buildable area for this 16-3. With the 50-foot setback from where the lot line would be and where the 50-foot setback from the wetline would be, there's not 50 feet left in between where it would make the aeroglass, the hourglass shape of the buildable area and, and not meet your regulations. So what we would propose or would like to discuss is going back to our original layout of the, the driveways and impacting a small portion of the 25% slope for the driveway, and keeping the driveways on individual lots. And this would, as Steph said, we have asked for a waiver for 10% driveway lower than other driveways that's been built recently in town with waivers, but we're gonna, as our profiles show, we're not going to go over 10%. That gets us to a buildable area out back, and that gets us to this buildable area here. Going back to the layout, the layout hasn't changed, as I said, except for the commercial lots. One other thing on Steph's review that I'd like to get clarification on is, there's two, and we can do an additional test bit, but currently we have two test bits on Lot 16, and she mentioned that both test bits had to be within the 30,000 square foot area. By reading your regs, it sounds like that 4,000 square foot area has to meet New Hampshire DES regulations, which, which allows you to go within 10 feet of the property line. So I would, this would meet that requirement, but if the town requires it somewhere in the regs, that it's within that 30,000 square feet, we can definitely do another pit. Other than that, I think that's the, the lot changes, and then the driveways are the major, major things that I'd like to bring up tonight.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'll like to open it up to the, the board for comment before opening up the, the public hearing. A few things to do on that, probably before we go on, because it doesn't look like it was done the last time. Something we're supposed to do on, on all these is, is have a vote on whether the application is a, is a development of regional impact, and we should take a vote on that. So let's, let's tackle that first. Either have discussion or just a motion.
Yeah, I have just, my only question, Mr. Chairman, would be regarding the driveways that would be impacting the steep slopes. And that would just be, so my assumption would be that there would be a plan to address that and to minimize and alleviate any runoff and erosion, et cetera. So it'd be more of a question for Scott, I think.
Yeah, and before we jump into that, I'm sorry, if, I just want to tick, tick this one off so we don't miss it again. We'll just have that, have that discussion or vote on, on whether this is a, is a development of regional impact. In my opinion, it is not, it's not a, nothing here is proposed is super substantial or has a high degree of traffic impact at this point. The commercial, there's nothing proposed there yet at this point for it. So when a site plan comes before us to actually develop that, you know, that would be a time where we could, again, request a, you know, a track of analysis and traffic analysis and all that, but.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, and I'll make a motion that we vote that this project does not have a regional impact.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote on that then. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Ms. Gast?
Yes.
And, and Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
All right, so that, and I'm a, so motion carries seven, oh, thank you. And now we can get into the, to more than any grading, so thank you for that. So we had the, the question for Mr. Anderson about the driveways, and if they do decide, if you do propose to go over the, the slopes, you know, what, what kind of mitigation would be there for, for stormwater and such, I believe, is that in runoff? Did I capture that right, Gary?
Yes, thank you. Sorry for jumping the gun on that, Chair.
No, no, that's okay.
If you want, I can address that.
Yeah, please.
So on the plan that I'm showing right now, which was the plan that we originally submitted with the, the plans that we're showing, I'll zoom into it a little bit. We're showing the, the grading, three to one going off to the sides, and then a swale. What we could propose is riprapping that swale or putting some type of protective material along that swale, so there's no erosion. And I think that, and we, of course, we'd have to show coverts underneath the ends of the driveway as well, as this water does run, as you're looking at the plan, to the left to that wetland.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Yeah, that was something I think I might have mentioned last time, too, and that was a question. So there is a, there is a ditch line that runs down this side of the road?
There, there is a minor one, it may have to be, you mean along Kennard Road, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, there is, there is some, I'd have to look closer at this area, but there is a covert that crosses underneath Kennard to, across the street right here, and this wetland drains there. I believe this drains down to that point as well.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be in favor of whether it's a note or something like that, just, you know, specifying that the swales next to the driveway should be, they have a turf reinforcement. Riprap can look pretty ugly and be hard to maintain over time, but understandable, it's needed at the, possibly at the end of the driveways, but as long as there's some sort of provision for that, so it's not rushing straight into the road, I think I'd be happy.
Okay.
And if you do propose to go back to the, to the individual driveway, crossing, crossing that, since you would end up, like with this proposal that's showing here, you would end up, you know, still impacting it on, on lot proposal 16-3. So why not maybe instead just go to that shared driveway, up the property line, and then into each lot that way, to have less impact on the, on the slopes?
We, we could do that, go up this lot line.
Right, and then tee off to the upper part of the, of 16-3, and then, you know.
And then split it up here and go either way. Yep.
So the reason that, just for the board and, and audience, the reason slopes are brought up is, areas of steep slopes are considered a critical area in our subdivision regulations, and they're also mentioned in areas fit for building and unfit for building for definition. And in general, you know, we try to avoid impacts to them. There's a couple of things on here, so being a scenic road, Kennard Road, and having driveways proposed would require CONCOM review or input, and then accent, impact to slopes, I believe, steep slopes would also have to have CONCOM review, so it's good to hash this out tonight to try to make sure the applicant, we give them enough direction, you know, to minimize trips to other boards.
Mr. Veal, when it's convenient, this is Susan.
Yep.
For people who are listening, including Mr. Langdon, I represent, or I'm also in the Conservation Commission, so I speak on environmental concerns, but not necessarily for the commission as, as a board. Two things that I noted, or I might have missed, is going through the punch list that was submitted to the planning board at the end of November last year. I did not see any reference or any communication from the Natural Heritage Bureau that would have noted that this was an area that might have sensitive species. And I don't know if I missed that, or if it just hadn't been attended to yet. A bigger concern is that this property falls into the Little River watershed, which is a protected watershed by New Hampshire regulations. And I'm just going to move away to my other desk here on the kitchen counter. Chapter 483, New Hampshire Rivers Management and Protection Program lists a Little River as a protected river, as it drains from Mendons Pond and continues on its way. So recommendations by the Conservation Commission would be at least a minimum buffer in addition to the proximity of steep slopes, which, another document on shoreline protection, chapter 2.6, recommends adding more buffer depending on the proximity of steep slopes to a wetland. So we would welcome our review and a presentation at our next Conservation Commission meeting, if that's convenient for you. I believe we are meeting on February 7th, the second Monday in February.
We'd be happy to.
That's the 8th, sorry, the 8th.
I, I could address that Natural Heritage Bureau comment, if you'd like.
You're okay, thank you.
We're not asking for a wetland permit, or a shoreline permit, or alteration of terrain permit, so we don't need to go ask and review Natural Heritage Bureau as far as, as I know. That's never, so we wouldn't have looked at that, with these lots being very large, too, only one needing to go to state subdivision because it's under five acres. I don't, I don't anticipate looking at the Natural Heritage Bureau for a review, but it's easy enough to do, and we didn't notice anything while we were out there, but we're not wetland or natural scientists either, so.
Well, well, other areas around there have indicated that they were habitat for, for at least three protected species. So because you are right in the midst of those areas, we would appreciate if you could move forward with that sort of review.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Frankwitz, for that, for proposed lot 16-2, the, the area that, that's, that looks like it's currently in there for the 25% plus slopes down at the bottom, is, is that calculated in, in that contiguous square footage?
This here?
Yeah.
No, no, we have like 32,000 square feet, including that, within the buildable setbacks.
There's another question on there.
And as we're sitting here looking at this, this line down here, in case you're wondering what that is, that was used for the ZBA, that's where the 1,000-foot setback is from Route 4. So that shows that our entire lot was within that 1,000 feet.
Just checking off the.
Just a quick question on my part for the Conservation Commission. Is that a notice meeting, or do we, is this considered a, I'm not sure, I don't, don't have to go to the Conservation Commission too often, so do we have to notice that?
Well, the Conservation Commission will have it noticed. If you call or contact our chairperson and get on the agenda, and then that will be part of the agenda for that evening, and we do meet remotely.
Right, I guess my question is, do we have to send out notifications and everything for that through Joanna?
Joanna? I, no, I don't think so. I think that's just part of the minutes and, and the continuance that happens. Check with Joanna, though. I don't think it's ever happened before.
Okay. She's shaking her head no, so.
Yeah, I, I agree, I believe it's something directed from this board, and it's kind of a continuation or something from here, so it's, I don't believe that that's a legally notice, besides the posting of the agenda by the CONCOM, that they have to, that you have to do additional notice, you know, certified mail, any kind of thing like that.
So I can assume by this conversation that we're on that agenda for February 8th, and nothing else that we have to do.
Well, it's up to you, the, as the applicant, to contact Sam DeMare, our chairperson, and make that happen, and Joanna can give you his contact information.
And Ms. Frankwitz, the wetlands that are shown, I think we clarified this before, but I just want to remember, those are based on the soil series that's shown, those are just poorly drained, not very poorly drained, correct?
Correct, yeah. Damon Burt is our wetland scientist on, on this project.
And, okay, so yeah, so, so the CONCOM review, if, in the subregs, is, it would, would come up in a few spots, as mentioned, so the scenic road access, I can find the exact location, I think it's 15.3.6, mentions a review by, by the, or any input by the Conservation Commission, and then the impact to critical areas, like, like steep slopes, that's another area that would require the, the CONCOM review. And we also have some time, because we usually send these plans out to other, all the other town departments, fire, police, the road agent, for additional review and comment as they may see fit. So those have been sent, sent out, we don't have anything back yet, so based on the data, the revised plans, just giving them a little bit more time on that. And like I said, because this agenda wasn't posted as a scenic road, we, we have to make sure that all future notifications are, are listed as such. That, that changed after the, the, the lots, the variance was granted.
Mr. Veal, Mr. Veal, may I just add one more thing?
Yep.
This is Susan again. On the project application checklist that was provided at the end of November, under, under number 22 capital E, the applicant indicated that they would be a no-cut zone along stream and wetlands, as maybe, as may be requested by the Conservation Commission, and the X is underprovided. So we would be looking for dialogue that applies to that as well. Talking about buffers and, and other protective measures for our wetlands. Number 22, capital E, on the punch list.
As it currently stands, we're not showing any no-cut zones, but we, I checked that because we are showing the 50-foot wetland buffers and stuff, but that's definitely something that we can talk about at the Conservation Commission in, in some areas that may be, may be more critical than others that the board feels.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Langdon.
Mr. Veal, this is Buzz Davies. I, I'm questioning the police and fire department wanting to see the new driveway plans before they give us final comments.
Yeah, agreed, both of those, especially the fire department would usually have a comment on that. So that, the sooner, I guess, we can get something from that, Mr. Frankwitz, to provide to them would, would be better. Sometimes their overarching comments are the same, but that gives them a better, you know, that they can answer, or to make responses a little bit more clearly.
Yeah, we'll get them, get the, the new plans or the new driveway turned around quickly,
and then I had mentioned, I caught it somewhere, and I can't remember if it was in the prior, the prior review questions that you already answered, I'm going back through those. Normally somewhere in the, in the application, it would be, you know, notation of underground utilities, and would, would show where either a cistern is located, or provide, you know, alternative methods on that. Sometimes applicants wait till they get the fire department response first to see, you know, what, what the fire department prefers. Have you addressed that?
We are waiting for the fire chief's response on review, and then underground, we can definitely put a note on there, you're saying all utilities to be underground.
And I do see that the well for 16-3 is moved now, I think on the other set of plans, it was still below the. I think on the other set of plans, it was still below the slopes, but that's been moved up, which is obviously, I'm sure, a much more favorable spot for that to occur.
Yeah.
All right. So there are a few other areas in, and I guess we could wait till CONCOM chimes in and maybe they won't be needed, that when you, when there's impact to either lots that have a lot of wetlands or critical areas like steep slopes, the board can sometimes request additional studies, like environmental impact assessments and runoff and things like that. So it's either something we could probably either talk about tonight as a board or push to see, you know, maybe the CONCOM will, you know, your meeting with them will hash out a lot of that, that discussion, which, you know, I'm fine with waiting if you are. And then the other part is, I know there was a waiver requested for the slope of the driveways. And I think a second waiver would have to come through for the impact of the steep slopes for driveways. So again, where CONCOM input is required on those, you know, I don't know if, to me, it would make more sense to hold off on action on those waivers.
Yeah, and on the steep slopes, I'd be honest, I can't find anywhere in the regs that it says you can't impact. And if there is, I just need to know the section and stuff so I can request that waiver.
It's a, it's in the subdivision regs, not the zoning ordinance. It is... I had it written down. I know I lost my number. So it's good to kind of just go through the subdivision regs and just search critical areas because like stormwater management plan is one example. The applicant shall submit copies of a stormwater management plan for any tract of land being developed where one or more of the following conditions are proposed or present. And one of those items is disturb critical areas. And there is a waiver option on that. Let's see. I think the same thing is, it's in another area too, right above that. The grading erosion sediment control plan, I believe, same thing.
I can look it up and find it.
Mr. Veal?
Yeah.
I found the reference in the email that you sent earlier.
Thank you.
It is 20.2.4. And it's also in 9.7. Mr. Frankwitz, I will forward this to you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh yeah, sorry. 20.2.4 is conservation of natural features. And that's a section where the planning board may request an advisory opinion from the Conservation Commission. So where that's a may, where you're going there already, you know, it suggests that, you know, you get, you address that with them.
Okay.
If you prefer, the board can definitely, you know, all members can speak on that because it is a may. It's not a shall. But if you're going to seek a waiver, I think that could, could help with that process. And then another thing we usually do on any major subdivision or subdivisions that have impact with a lot of wetlands or even if not impact in the wetlands, but have a lot of wetlands on site or steep slopes, is we'll usually do sidewalks. So that's something the board would have to make a motion and vote on and schedule. We can address that a little bit later, but I'd like to... Does any other, anybody else on the board have comments before we open it to the public? No. All right. So I am going to open it. It's 7:35. I'm going to open it to, to the public. If anybody's here that would like to speak for, against, or just has questions about the application, we usually have those that want to speak for it first, but being in Zoom, it can kind of be a little bit more difficult to judge that. There's no table to come up to, so you can just raise your hand and the, and we'll admit you and open up your microphone so you can speak. And we will, since this has to be continued to another point anyway, we will continue the public hearing as well to that point, so. So is there anybody that would like to speak? Seeing none? Okay. So we will keep the public hearing open to whenever the need continues. So back to the board. So a couple of items on there that, so the CONCOM, there's a couple, like we said, have some input based on the scenic roads and then critical areas. If anybody else wants or feels that we should do a sidewalk, and we could, I think, I don't think, Mr. Frankwitz, you, based on what we've said so far, depending on CONCOM's review and waivers, you know, foresee this changing drastically at this point?
No, no.
So if we were to do a sidewalk, this would be a good time. So open comment, so it's either, like, you can see the comment that the board doesn't feel a sidewalk is needed or our motion to have a sidewalk at a date and time specific.
Mr. Veal, my feeling is, I'm not feeling, from what I'm seeing, that the sidewalk would be necessary. That's my opinion.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Veal, I would defer until the applicant meets with the Conservation Commission to see if the commissioners would be anxious to see the site boots on the ground. So I defer to a later date and discuss it at a later date.
Okay. So we will, not see any other comments on that and a motion, so we'll, we'll push on that one. I think we're at the point now where the continuation would be appropriate. Let's see. I know some dates were thrown away, thrown around for you, Mr. Frankwitz, for the CONCOM. And I want to see when our next meeting is after that. Our meeting, we have a meeting on February 10th.
Yeah, I mean, if we can get on that, where we have, we'll have gone to CONCOM and hopefully, you know, the plans that we prepare with the new driveway and stuff and other things that we add, we can have, we can at least go through what the Conservation Commission had.
Okay. Yeah, and then so normally for us, the deliverables are normally a few weeks in advance, but when it's kind of minor changes or like something like driveways, I think we've gone down to usually like up to like seven days in advance, just to make sure that we can get them and staff can provide input to us.
Okay.
That would bring us, if we do that, that'd be like February 3rd.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Is that enough?
Yep. Well, really, the revision we're going to do is mainly the driveway. So I think we can get that done by next Wednesday and resubmit it.
Actually, I might be too aggressive. The, so where it's input from the CONCOM, I don't know if that would give the Conservation Commission enough time to both meet with you and then draft a response. I don't know what that timeline usually is. Maybe we can advise.
Mr. Veal, I can usually take care of that. We've done that before.
Okay, so now that, within a few days would be sufficient.
Yeah, so if we could get on for the 10th of February, that would be great.
Yep. Would anybody care to make a motion as such?
I have actually one last comment that I actually just happened to notice on the plans that resubmitted, and it kind of comes from a previous conversation we had. I'm not sure if this has always been here, but I'm noticing that there's, it's called out that there's a proposed dedicated easement along Smoke Street. Is that new or is that, has that always been there?
It was new on the resubmitted plans because what we did, we got the 25 feet along Canard Road, along Smoke Street. There was one little section there that wasn't the 25 feet. So that is new to this.
Okay.
This amount.
Okay, I just noticed it.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought that up because I just caught that too and I meant to mention that that's, so that would be something when we make a final action on the application, we can't accept easements on behalf of the town. It's the board selectman that does that. So I believe it would come after the, you know, after, you know, a conditional approval if that were to occur. And that'd be one of the conditions.
Okay.
If that's, that's my understanding anyway.
I think it's the only avenue we know of right now.
Okay, so any other, any other discussion for tonight on this?
I'll make a motion to continue case 20-009-SUB to February 10th, it was?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Mooney?
Yep.
And any further discussion on that? And seeing none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Ms. Davies? Mr. Davies, sorry. Jumping ahead.
Yes.
Ms. Gass?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that as well, so that's unanimous, continued to 2:10, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And Ms. Frankwitz, one thing I would ask, that we've asked other people before, if it's not already done, is it's helpful where proposed driveways are to put stakes up with a little bit of flagging. That way people can at least drive by and see where they are on the road because sometimes that's, that's, you know, all that the sidewalk is really looking for is how that sightline is.
Okay, will do.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 10th. And again, the deliverables are the 2-3.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is we have plans to sign for case 21-001-LLA. Those have come in. Mr. Groenhees, the board chair, has agreed to go in, I believe, tomorrow to sign those on behalf of the board. We usually, in normal times, would have a quorum of people sign them, but that's not required. So, so Mr. Groenhees will do that as the chair.
Very good.
All right. Well, is there any public on here? I see one phone number that I don't recognize, an iPhone, but if there is public, we usually reserve a spot every night of a meeting for public comment if there's just general questions about planning board items. If it's about a specific application, we might not be able to answer it directly. But if there's anybody that would like to speak, time is now. Otherwise, you can send an email in to Joanna, and she will get it to the chair, myself, or Steph, and we'll respond as we can. Moving on. Staff board member updates. I'll go to, I'm going to go in order on my screen. Ms. Casella?
I have no updates.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
No report here.
All right. Mr. McKinnon?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Eaton?
We had a board meeting on the 25th. Again, started out with just accounts payable and payroll manifest. We had our committee reports, which is Budget Committee, Planning Board, CIP, 300th, and Marston Property. And, excuse me. We had an appointment of an emergency manager, management director, and that's going to be the fire chief, Jay Belcheck. Again, we talked about the deliberative session, which will be changed to the official date will be April 17th. And they'll have both the school and the town. The school will go first, 7, starting at 7, and then it goes to possibly 7:00 PM. And election day will now be on June 8th, which is a Tuesday. We had separate the warrant articles, you know, to the town have been, they'll be on the ballot. And one other thing. So we had waived deeds. And we notified the tax collector that we'll not accept the tax collector's deeds on several properties in town. And that's about it.
That sounds like enough. Thank you for that. And then Ms. Gass?
I don't have any updates tonight.
All right. Mr. Davies?
Nope, I'm all set.
Ms. Mooney?
Just one thing to remind the public that we have an open position on the Conservation Commission for a member. So if you're interested in conservation and helping out, stepping up for your community, applications can be made to the select board through the business office.
Now, Mr. Veal, can I also just remind anybody that's looking to run for office, it ends on Friday this week, so.
No, that was my one item. You stole my thunder. Yeah. The deadline for signing up for town elections or town positions is Friday, January 29th. You do so at the town offices. I don't believe you need an appointment to do so. There's, there's a list online on the town page of all the different committees, budget, select board, this board, ZBA, a few others. So good way to get involved in the town is to throw your hand in the ring on one of those and take part. That brings us to the next item, which is some minutes. I believe there was a request to table the January 14th minutes for now. I think Mr. Groenhees wanted to just possibly put an edit in on those or at least review it again. But that, we do have three dates available other than that. Minutes of October 28th, 18th, I'm sorry, November 18th and December 9th, all 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve minutes for October 28th, 2020, November 18th, 2020, and December 9th, 2020, as edited.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve those three sets of minutes. Any further comment on those? Nope. All those in favor, roll call. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Ms. Gass?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I'm a yes on that as well. That motion carries unanimously on that. Is anybody else have any further, oh, I skipped you, Joanna. All right, you can, you can have a chance.
Just real quick, I just wanted to let you all know to keep an eye out on your mailboxes. I have your packets for February 10th out today, okay?
Thank you so much for doing that. It's a big help.
Are they all arriving okay to everybody?
They, they got them in there.
Okay, good.
Thank you for that. So at this point, we, in that, don't tell Dirk that we finished a meeting in under an hour when I chaired it, but a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Second. All right, we're adjourned. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.